Okay, good evening to this March 10, 2020 Baltimore City School Board meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to reopen the meeting. Commissioner Richardson, is there a second? Commissioner Roberts, all those in favor? Bon Dima?
Richardson.
Chinia? I believe I'm on eight.
Reed is there?
Reed is here, too.
Nine and one absent, I'm sorry. And so, at this time, I'd ask if the audience could please stand for the presentation of colors by the Carver Vocational Technical High School ROTC.
Call guard. Attention. Carrie Collis. Center base. Call guard, hold. Present, colors. Ma'am, that command sergeant major Curtis from Calhoun Technical High School, JROTC, Blue National Union, question mission to portion colors, ma'am.
Commissioner Brennan.
Order, Collis. Call guard, hold. Present, colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Order, Collis. Hold.
We want to thank the JROTC from Carver Votech Vocational Technical High School, and we had Cadet Sergeant Major Sean Curtis, Cadet Sergeant Carl Muhammad, Cadet Sergeant Khalil Scott, Cadet Corporal Dre Wright, Cadet Corporal Kai Smith. We also want to thank the student performers from Thomas Jefferson Elementary Middle, the JT, I'm sorry, the TJ Stellar String Program. Their director is Ms. Sherry Norris, and we had Alani McPherson, Keith James Jr., Chloe Jingles, Micaiah Anderson, Jalen Richmond, Skylar Rice, Darian Newton, Taylor Austin, Cameron Hegy, Lyric Booker, Christopher Green, Kyle Patterson, Shannon Williams, and Zion Janyami. And we also want to acknowledge Ms. Danielle Davis, who is the principal from Thomas Jefferson, and Mr. Edward Pender, who is the community school coordinator. Thank you. We're going to allow our students to gather up their materials, so if you'll just give us a few moments, and then we'll start. some of our students here from Thomas Jefferson. Thank you all for coming out to support the students, and hopefully, everyone has enjoyed this and see what can happen when we have a really good arts integration program in our schools. So again, thank you. The next thing is a moment of silence, and that's a little hard to do with... At this time, we're going to have a moment of silence, as we generally do at the beginning of our meetings, to recognize the passing of two of our city school employees.
It is with deep regret, we inform you of the passing of Teresa Fulmer, who served in city schools for 26 years, four months, as an assistant special education. Mrs. Fulmer unfortunately departed on February 22, and will be missed greatly by her family, friends, and city schools. It is also with deep regret that we inform you of the passing of Theodore Anthony, who served in city schools for 13 years and seven months as a special education paraeducator. Mr. Anthony unfortunately departed on July 27 of last year, and will be missed greatly by his family, friends, and city schools. Can we take a moment of silence to recognize the passing of these two city schools employees?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. At this time, I'd like to accept a motion to approve the prior open session minutes. Thank you. Commissioner Roberts, is there a second? Commissioner Bon Dima, all those in favor? Richardson, Chinia? And I'm pretty sure Commissioner Reed is saying yes also. Okay, so we are nine and one absent, nine in favor, one absent. And then I need a motion to approve the closed session summaries. Thank you, Commissioner Brooks, is there a second? Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor?
James.
Richardson.
Chinia?
That is eight in favor, one absent.
Okay, all righty. I don't have lots of comments for you this evening, just two. First, I want to, some of you probably noticed that one person beside me doesn't look like Dr. Santelisa. I want you to know that she is fine, but we encourage Dr. Santelisa to do what we just finished thanking some other parents for doing, and that was to go and support one of her children this evening. So she's attending a program, and will be back with us. But we do want to thank our chief of schools, Mr. John Davis, for being here with us this evening to represent her. The second thing is, I just, after listening to the strings this evening, really brings to mind an event that many of us attended last week, and that was the expressions program at the Baltimore School for the Arts. And it was great to hear that our soloist tonight is going to be attending there next year. And again, congratulations to those students, it was a beautiful performance. If you've never attended one of those, please put it on your calendar to do sometime next year when they do that again. I'd also like to acknowledge a gift of 200 jackets that were distributed to principals and central office staff in attendance at the Fund for Educational Excellence Winter Event, and those were donated by Under Armour. You okay? Okay. All righty, so moving on, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the personnel and quasi judicial matters. Commissioner McFadden? The second, Commissioner Roberts, all those in favor?
James.
Richardson.
Chinia?
Brooks.
That is eight and one absent, okay? And so, I think with that, I will turn this over to Mr. Davis for CEO comments.
All right, thank you, board chair, Chinia. Let's start with Chief Grant Skinner and the pep report.
Good evening, commissioners. Chief Davis, we have several appointments this evening, and some folks are here, so if you can stand when I call your name, we can recognize you. First, Danielle Byerson, a teacher at Windsor Hills Elementary Middle School, is appointed educational specialist to student engagement and extracurricular activities effective March 16. Aaron Hippolyte, educational associate at Patterson High School, is appointed assistant principal at Patterson High School effective March 11. Tiffany Williams, assistant principal at Patterson High School, is reassigned to assistant principal at the Middle Elementary Alternative Program effective March 11. Baba Olameji, currently interim principal at Johnston Square Elementary School, is appointed principal at Johnston Square Elementary School effective March 11. Taisha Swinton, interim principal at Digital Harbor High School, is appointed principal, Digital Harbor High School, effective March 11. And Cynthia Wilson, assistant principal at Marie G. Ferring Elementary Middle School, is appointed interim principal at Gardenville Elementary School, March 11 through June 30. Thank you.
All right, I do want to say a few words about our principals, and I would ask them to stand as I say a few words about them, and let's start with Baba. Baba Olameji has been an educator in Baltimore City Public Schools since 2006. He first entered education through the Baltimore City Teaching Residency Program, and was inspired by his mother, father, and grandmothers, all of whom served in education. He holds a bachelor's degree from Towson University and a master's degree in education from Johns Hopkins. Mr. Olameji was a classroom teacher for 11 years, and since last June, has served as the interim principal at Johnston Square Elementary School, where he will now continue as principal, given tonight's permanent appointment. And I want to thank Mr. Olameji, because I know being a first-year principal is very difficult, and he stepped into it in flying colors. If you follow him on Twitter as well, you'll get a flavor of it, but he's doing a great job. Thank you, Baba. Cynthia Wilson Shirley, she has dedicated 24 years of service to city school students and families. She began teaching language arts at Harlem Park Middle School in 1995. She has served as an assistant principal at Dallas F. Nicholas Elementary and Marie G. Ferring Elementary Middle, as well as co-director of Connections. Mrs. Wilson Shirley holds a bachelor's degree from Morgan State University and a master's degree from Goucher College. With tonight's appointment, Mrs. Wilson Shirley will serve as interim principal at Gardenville Elementary School. And two additional things I want to point out. First of all, I need people to know that we have a very strong bench. There are assistant principals out there, like Ms. Wilson Shirley, that are ready to step into the principal role, and either at Gardenville or someone else, I'm sure that she will, and she's going to do a great job at Gardenville, and already has for a few weeks. Additionally, I would like to say that Principal Brooks, who she's replacing right now, is on leave due to a medical situation, and I just want to call that out, because Principal Brooks has been a longstanding member, leader, of Baltimore City Public Schools, and has done a great job, and Ms. Wilson Shirley, right now, has fallen into some big steps in big shoes. And Taisha Swinton. No, the team can't stand up, just you this time. Taisha was born and raised in New York, pursued her passion for English secondary education at Susquehanna University, and then earned a master's degree in educational leadership from Duxell University in 2013. She came to Baltimore City from Newark, New Jersey, where she served as an English teacher and assistant principal. Here in city schools, she was principal of NACA II, before beginning her current appointment last July as interim principal at Digital Harbor High School, where she will continue her service as principal. A lifelong learner herself, she has currently enrolled in Duxell University's Educational Leadership doctoral program. I do want to say that at the choice fair, when I was walking around and visiting folks, one of her science teachers at Digital, when she, oh, there we go, right on cue, like we planned it, right, had to stop me and say, "Oh, no, 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 you have to make sure that Ms. Swinton becomes the principal of Digital Harbor." She has walked the talk, she steps in and is a substitute teacher when she needs to be, she's a model teacher when she needs to be, she's doing what she needs to do. We had a chief walk there about a month ago, and looked over a lot of the literacy work that's happening, and the things that they're putting in place at Digital just absolutely warms my heart. Thank you, Taisha, I know you're going to do a great job. All right, as we usually do, we're going to start this evening with a brief video from our team of student reporters. This past weekend, the robotics team from MIRVO competed against teams from around the state of Maryland. Student reporter Tia Bryant has an inside glimpse on how they were preparing for the big tournament.
Hey, guys, it's Tia Bryant for City Schools TV. Right now, I'm checking out the state qualifying robotics team at MIRVO, so let's gear up and see how they're getting ready.
Because I'm thinking strategy, right? You, you know, pick up everything, I double it, triple it.
So today, we're getting ready for our state competition. This is a yearly thing, but for MIRVO, this is a first. Really, as a senior, I'm really glad that I was able to, you know, help lead my team to states this year.
Today, we're working on my robot, and basically, we're just working with the team, and everybody's learning how to drive and get the concepts of the basics of how to drive a robot. And I was working on my robot, you know, fixing out the kinks that's in it, putting screws in it that it needs, if it fell out, or like, you know, adjusting the borders and stuff.
So today, I'm trying to figure out, because I'm having some problems with the motors overheating, so I'm trying to figure out what's going on with that, because if that happens at the competition, then I can't compete anymore.
Past tournaments, like in the beginning stage, I didn't know what I was doing, and I didn't know, like, if I was doing it right, and like, basically, we was having, like, struggles with my robot, and then as it went on, as it progressed over the year, I wound up getting more efficient and more better in timing of building robots.
So it was really cool the way that we got there, because all of the other competitions, we were like last places, but then on the final competition, somehow, we got all the way back.
Me being a team leader, I feel like I have to be the best person on the team, really, and I feel like, you know, earlier this year, I set a goal for us, you know, we gradually needed to improve and get better, but my goal for us this year was to make it to states, and I fulfilled that goal. So as team captain, I feel like I did my job this year, and I can graduate knowing that I put my team at a high standard for next year.
I always wanted to be an engineer since I was like 10, and it set up like a future for me, because I can learn the basics of how to build a robot.
So the major thing I want to do is aerospace engineering, so building all these robots helped me to understand all about engineering, and the things that I want to do in the future.
Me being an engineer, robotics has really helped pique my interest in that field, solving problems, developing solutions.
That was an amazing glance of the robotics team at MIRVO. This school definitely has some future engineers on their hands. Best of luck to your tournament, guys. This is Tia Bryant for City Schools TV. Catch you next time.
And I'm pleased to congratulate the MIRVO team for receiving the Northrop Grumman Judges Award at the event as special recognition for exemplary effort and perseverance. If we could give them a round of applause. And now, I'd like to invite Dr. Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education, who will introduce the members of City Schools' LRE Task Force and its core work product, their three-year plan for ensuring that special education students are placed in their least restrictive environment, or as we shorten, LRE.
Good evening, Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education.
Good evening, Dr. Courtney Hill, Special Education Liaison.
Good morning, good evening, Papi Fahey, Ed Specialist, specialized in learning.
Good evening. Press the button.
Good evening, I'm Annie Till, I'm a passionate special education teacher.
So this evening, we're just going to provide an update on what the work we've been doing around the LRE Task Force. So at this time, I'm going to ask those task force members that were able to join us to please stand. And I'm asking them to stand, because I want to point out that the task force members are school-based leaders, special education teachers, ILED, central office staff members, both from teaching and learning and the Office of Special Education. We also have a consultant, Buzzy Hettelman, who may be joining us later, who is also part of our task force. So I just want us to see that we have a task force that has, able to provide us multiple perspectives. And so, as we continue through this presentation, you will actually hear some of the work that is actually happening in the schools. Thank you. So again, I want to ground us in our special education priorities. Again, educating students in their least restrictive environment, with a focus on their, as we know, as individualized. Also, ensuring that all students, regardless of their disabilities, or where they're receiving their specially-designed instruction, have access to high-quality instruction and services, and in doing so, narrowing or closing that achievement gap. In 2017, we came together as the Office of Special Education and redesigned the special education stat, to have a more focus on both instruction, compliance, and leadership supports. And through our special education stat, we included multiple offices. Those offices to include special education, the Office of Teaching and Learning, the Office of the Schools Office, Wholeness Office, and Office of Achievement and Accountability. And this was intentional, to really have a focus on who those students are that are receiving specially-designed instruction, the decision-making around specially-designed instruction for our students, and where they're receiving their services, what their least restrictive environment is. We begin by looking at the district data, then drilling down on CLN data, school data, and individual student data. And we really began to focus on it, looking at it through a racial equity lens, to be able to say, what do we really think about our students, where they're receiving their services, and how we're identifying our students. We then began to use that data to inform our professional development, for both our general educators and special educators, as well as our school leaders, our parents, and community advocates as well, and then providing a tiered support. So through that, we also began to think about how are we providing specially-designed instruction support around coaching for our central office leaders, and then began to think about, as we're going out into the schools and identifying those students that are receiving their services in self-contained environments, who are these students? Do these students truly have equity and access to high-quality instruction and services? And are these students in the self-contained environment because of behavior, or because they truly need to have additional supports around academics? After we began to really have a robust discussion and conversation unpacking data through our stat process, and we began to have real conversations about mindsets and biases, and we began to see those changes taking place among the offices, not just at central office, but then as we were taking the professional development into our schools, one of the Offices of Special Education staff members then became a REACH fellow, and that's Dr. Hill. And so, Dr. Hill came to me, and she said, during my REACH fellow project, I would really like to focus on something that we can begin to move the work around LRE. And so, she began to do her REACH fellow project around LRE. And so, from that, we began to say, let's begin to put together a actual focus group to be able to talk about this work, and to talk about the multi-grade classrooms. And so, in October, we then had staff that came before this board, so there were two staff members from the Office of Teaching and Learning, and two teachers that are actually beginning and talking about the challenges of having multi-grade classrooms. And so, we asked those members to join our task force, so that we can hear what are some of the challenges and barriers within the schools, as well as those that we face within central office, to see what it is that we need to include in our three-year plan. And so, as we began to develop the three-year action plan, to really think about where we're providing services for our students that are receiving specially-designed instruction, we began to really have focus points for this plan. So one focus point is around professional development. Professional development for our central office staff. So what does that look like around coaching and support for our schools? And then for school-based staff, around the continuum of services, what does it look like to provide a continuum of services for all of our students? Co-teaching instructional models, staffing and scheduling for our school-based leaders, how can we provide a greater continuum of services for our students, and really provide those supports for our school-based leaders? A communication plan for our schools, for our parents and community partners, for our advocates. Also, around continued monitoring and support. So when we're talking about monitoring and support from the, from central office for our students, as well as for our teachers, and so, you'll hear some of that when we have those report out from our teachers today. And then aligning our monitoring tools, so that they're aligned both academically, as well as compliant. No more just check the box to say that we've come out, and we've actually come into your classroom to see what's happening. We're really rolling up our sleeves and providing that support. And then looking at the measures of success. So let's look at our students. We know the data is showing that those students that are in the more restrictive environment of a self-contained, we know that their attendance is not the same as those students that are with their typical peers. We also know, when we look at the data around discipline, the students that are in the at the data around discipline, the students that are in a self-contained environment are more likely to be suspended at a higher rate than those students that are receiving their specially-designed instruction in the least restrictive environment of LREA, which means they are provided those inclusive opportunities. And also, when we begin to look at the exit rate. And the exit rate contains those students that are graduating, or exiting, returning to the general education setting, and decreasing the dropout. So students that are educated with their typical peers at a greater rate have a less likelihood to drop out, have a higher graduation rate, and are more likely to then return to general education. And so with that, Dr. Hill is going to speak a little bit more about her research.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks.
You're welcome.
So when I was a REACH Fellow, one of the things that I was challenged to do was to come up with a results statement, which is essentially something that I would like to see accomplished during my tenure in City Schools. So in partnership with Dr. Brooks, the results statement that I selected is before you, and it's generally that all City School students with disabilities are educated in their least restrictive environment. So my rationale in developing that results statement came from taking a deeper dive at our special education data. So as you can see before you, overall, our population, our special ed population is 15% of Baltimore City Public Schools. When you break down our 15% of special ed population into the students who are in LREC, you can actually see that we have 22.4% of our students with disabilities who are receiving their education in a self-contained setting. And then if you look in that second box, the target for the state is to have less than 10.8%. So we are more than double what the state would like us to be. I also took a look at some longitudinal data. So when I looked at City Schools' LREC percentage over time, I did notice that even though there was some fluctuation in the number of students with disabilities overall in City Schools, that number of students who were being provided service in the self-contained setting was staying consistent. It's always been between roughly 22 and 25%. So that was definitely raising some red flags for me. But what definitely solidified this as something I needed to focus on is this next piece of data. And that's when you look at City Schools' LREC population by race. 95% of the students who receive their services in a self-contained setting are students of color. So one of the focuses of the REACH Fellowship is to make sure that the results work you do is rooted in equity. So thinking about the work that we were doing with Dr. Durant and City Schools' new equity policy, it just made sense for me that we should focus on this population and see if we could move some of those students out of LREC and into LREA, so they would have greater access to opportunities that their typical peers have access to.
So as we began this work in our focus group, there were certain data pieces that we really began to focus on. And so again, as a group, we looked at the district data, and then we began to unpack individual school data. And so we really began to look at trends and what we found. And what we found, again, is some of the work that Dr. Hill shared, is that most of the students of color were those students that we found that were in that more restrictive environment of LREC. We also found by gender that most of them were also males, that we found. Yes, you have a question?
Dr. Brooks, I don't want to be anal, but number two, you have a misspelling in that line. Just letting you know.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So also, we began to look at, really beginning to look at what our own mindsets were as a focus group, and then also as a district, and whatever biases there may be, to determine whether those are part of the decision-making that's happening within the teams, to determine if we're bringing some of those biases into our decision-making when we're deciding where students are going to be receiving their services. Then also to begin to think about the strategies as we begin to implement this three-year plan. So as we begin to implement the three-year plan, really thinking about how we're going to roll this out, what are we going to, we're going to begin to look at our youngest learners, because we know that right now, our youngest learners are receiving their services in LREA. What we find is trend data is showing that once the students are entering third grade, we begin to see that they're going to the more restrictive environment of LREC. And they kind of remain there through middle, through the middle grades, and then once they're in high school, then we begin to see where more students are being included again. And then actually implementing the strategies, and then reviewing and revising to see where we need to come back, and then have those conversations again to see where we need to tweak this three-year plan. And so what we're going to do now is actually have some of the members of the team come up and speak about what they have come to learn through this focus group, and then our next steps.
All right. Good evening again. My name is Annie Till, and I'm a passionate special education teacher. I'm so thankful to be here today as a team member of the LRE Focus Group. I count down the days to our next team meeting, because for the first time as a teacher, I feel like my voice is louder than the four walls of my classroom. I shared with you in October that is unjust, that our media students receive the least amount of instruction in these multi-grade classrooms. It becomes overwhelming to see the inequities around special education settings that are taking place every day in the schools. As a teacher's perspective, I'm able to share barriers that impact our goal, and then become solution-oriented. It's empowering, and it brings hope. We are going to be changing the trajectory of future generations of students with disabilities.
Hello, my name is Shannon Patrick. I'm a special educator at Hartford Heights. I'm proud to be a part of this Focus Group and the work that we're doing on behalf of the students that we service, because we cannot keep dis servicing our students by giving them the bare minimum instead of what they actually deserve. And then I want to close out by two quotes that grounded me in this work. So when all students learn together, each student learns more. And this quote, "Inclusion is a fundamental guarantee that individuals with disabilities will receive all of the rights, privileges, and protections of the society at large." Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark King. I'm the Instructional Leadership Executive Director for CLN 6. This actually started for me about two years ago, when I had the opportunity to attend a national conference, and seeing what other districts were doing with students with disabilities that were very much more severe than the students that we actually serve. So coming back and having conversations with principals around the ANET data and around Park data, and seeing similarities between where special education students were scoring and general education students were scoring, gave us the impetus to go ahead and start having conversations at IEP meetings about getting these, getting these students into the general education classroom settings. At this point, Collington Square Elementary Middle School is a full inclusion school. Calverton Elementary Middle School, where Martia Cooper is the principal, grades six, seven, eight, are inclusion. And I spoke to the Assistant Principal and the IEP Chair this morning, and they're scheduling IEP meetings for grades three, four, and five, so they can be fully included in the fall as well. Also, I have Principal Denisea Logan, she's the principal at Harlem Park, and she can give you details about what they're doing in her building.
Good evening. We too are fully inclusive. We eliminated our LREC setting. The desire was to make sure that our students are with their grade-level peers, and that they are in a more inclusive environment. I definitely took a budget, a hit to my budget, but I had to do what's right by my kids. And so to move them into the classroom with their peers was the right thing. We have teachers that are co-teaching, so I have the general educator and the special educators co-teaching. My special educators also provide interventions, they pull small groups, and they also, of course, complete their resource hours. All kids benefit, because at some point, you have two teachers in a classroom, so there are more people to help you. My wonderful IEP Chair, Molly Connor, she held tons of meetings. We had to have IEP meetings with our parents and staff members, so that we could reevaluate the IEPs to make sure that we are still providing the resources and supports that our kids need, but again, in the general ed setting. So again, like, the focus is on academics and not just on behavior. We noticed that a lot of our children were placed in the LREC setting based on behaviors, and not because they can't do the work. So moving them into that setting just sets them up. Again, they can learn from their peers, but sometimes the peers are also learning from them, because they are the ones that sometimes are academically stronger. When we think about setting our kids up for success as adults, there is an LRE setting or special ed self-contained class for adults. So we want our kids to be prepared and not to continue to handicap them and place them in an isolated situation.
Hi, hello, I'm Michelle Fahey, Ed Specialist, Office of Specialized Learning. I'm here this evening in place of Kath and Drayton Barber. I'm one of the four attendees who came in October to explain to you the LREC, multi-grade level classrooms, and the challenges that teachers and students face in these settings. It is a wonderful opportunity to be invited by Dr. Brooks to be a part of this think tank and this work group. We are in a situation where we can only move forward and move up for our students in Baltimore City. We are in a fantastic situation and working with this group. I know that everyone wants to move our children forward, wants them to be with their grade-level peers, wants them learning, and they want them in their least restricted environment. And I want to thank you very much for including me in that.
So we know we still have a lot of work to do. We know that this is a huge mountain, because there are mindsets that we need to change. But we do know that there are children that are currently in LREC that can be with their typical peers. And so as we continue to work with school leaders, with school staff, and with central office staff, and making informed decisions based upon data, moving students into their least restrictive environment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Brooks. I also want to thank Ms. Till and Ms. Patrick. As teachers, your day job is hard enough, let alone coming to this work group, but your voice is that important. And I also want to thank Principal Logan for being honest about the real issues that we face, which is really around too many kids that have behavior issues being put in a self-contained setting, right? And that's work that we all have to do, because we do have to ensure that they have the exact same opportunities as all of our other kids, and too often, we make decisions that go against that. So it's great to raise that. Don't stop raising that, because we need to break that down and get those percentages down, so that the kids can learn with their peers. All right? Thanks. Oh, sorry. There might be some questions.
To, thank you all. To Principal Logan, I'm curious to know two things. First, what is the transition like for the students that are in this different program, the right program? But what is the transition like generally for them? Can you elaborate just a little bit about that, on that?
It actually depends on the grade level. So some of our little, our younger people, we definitely can move them in smoother. It's the older kids, the middle school kids, that have been placed in the setting early on, and trying to get them to...
Because they've been there for so long.
They've been there for so long. And then just having conversations with them, because they don't think they can do the work, but they are doing the work. So just encouraging them. Sometimes we do pair them with buddies, but a lot of times, they have friends that are already in the general ed setting, and they're already embarrassed about being away from them. So to, some kids, they get in, they're excited, and it's great. We just have to manage, then you start to manage behaviors that they're so excited, they're not going to do the work. But then there are others that we do ease in, and we have our special educators with them. So sometimes, we start off maybe part of the day, and then they're, you know, pulled out another part of the day. But they're already with their, with them during resource or specials, science, social studies. So it's kind of like, it depends on the individual. We actually have individualized plans for all of the kids that we have moved into LRE B or A.
Now, do your, do, another thing, do your co-curricular teachers, those resource or specialist, people call them classes, do they also have special educators in the room with them during that time?
Unfortunately, no. That would be ideal. My budget doesn't allow me to do that, because at that time, my teachers, special educators, and general educators are co-planning, they're planning together, they're collaborating. So no, unfortunately, and as a former resource or SPAR, SPED teacher, I mean, our special teacher, we don't get that luxury, but we are still providing accommodations and modifications, like the IEP states.
Sure. How receptive have parents been in this process?
It just depends on the child. Some parents are afraid. It's a comfort thing for them for their kids to be in a smaller setting. And then there are some that are really excited and happy that their kids are moving, because that's progress, right? That's growth for them, because they no longer have to be isolated. Now they can be with their, their peers. So it just depends on the child. We definitely sit at the table, and we talk with the parents, we invite the parents, if you want to come in, you want to sit with them for a while, especially for our little people. But they, again, it just depends on the child.
And finally, I'm just curious to know how you perhaps informally engage other school leaders in the work that you're doing. I know it's tough to, I know that there's a whole professional learning cycle and all of that, but informally, how do you engage other principals in the work, talk to them about the strengths, the areas, you know, for growth that you're experiencing in your school, in ways that they can also, if they are in situations similar to yours, how you can, I guess, sharpen iron together, if that makes sense?
It's interesting that you said that. I actually had a meeting today with Principal Pratt. She came over to the school.
At Sandtown?
At Sandtown, yeah. So we were working through some, she came during collaborative, collaborative planning today. And afterwards, we started talking about it, because at our CLN, Dr. Brooks and the team just came to talk to us during our CLN meeting last week about this work. And so now, everybody's talking about it. So she and I threw some ideas around, we talked about her numbers, just how she, where she should start. So we're going to continue to collaborate. But I'm also going to shout out Principal Michelle Stanfield at Cross Country. So she is my thought partner, my cohort member from New Leaders. So we speak every morning. And I can't take credit for what I'm, like, so some of the way we started with our middle school, I actually learned from her. And so, you know, just taking what I've learned from other leaders, and then sharing it with my, my cohort, well, my CLN members. But yeah, definitely with Michelle, that was informal. And then today, just before I came here, with Principal Pratt. So we, I mean, if you ask, I'll share.
Thank you.
I just, maybe I misheard you, but I guess you guys talked earlier about the shift from, they start as LRE, then they become more restrictive, and then they go back to being least restrictive? Something about third grade and...
So what the data is showing us, that for our earliest learners, so our kindergarten students, first grade students, second grade students, the data is showing that those students, the majority of those students are actually included with their peers. So they are in a general ed setting 80% or more of the time. So they're with their typical peers, LREA. We began to see a shift in the data around third grade, where through the IEP team decision-making, we're seeing that those students, third grade through eighth grade, are in a more restrictive environment, or LREC. So they are inside the general ed less than 40% of the time. And so when we begin to unpack the data, we're seeing most of this is because of behavior, or because of some other decisions that have been made. So some of it is because of parents. The parents are saying, my child needs a smaller learning environment. My child, based upon some other situations that may have happened, my child needs to be in this type of environment. But what we're saying to schools, let's really begin to unpack this. Let's begin to unpack, let's look at all of your school data, and let's look at where they are. Are they comparable to their typical peers? And so why are we saying that they need to be in a separate segregated type of environment for their instruction? And use the data to inform. And so as one of the colleagues said, when we begin to transition our students and think about transition to post-secondary, or as students begin to age out, there is no self-contained. And so I always give the example, and my colleagues will probably laugh, outside of the schoolhouse, there's no self-contained McDonald's, there's no self-contained Pop Warner football, there's no self-contained AAU basketball. So if those students, if our students are able to be included in those type of activities, why aren't we having those type of conversations when we're talking at the IEP team table? And we should always start with the general ed setting first. Why can't the student be included with the appropriate accommodations, modifications, supplementary aids and services? I just want to say thank you for the, especially for the diversity within the Task Force. And I do look forward to hearing more in terms of what you're learning. And I'm actually, I jotted down some of the schools, but I think I'm speaking for other members of the board. I would love to come and visit, to see some of this in action. But thank you all.
All right, there's a few more items to bring up. The first one is that it is March, and if you are a college basketball fan, you know it's March Madness. And if you're a high school basketball fan, you know that the city championship was played last week, and Polly's Boys and Girls Team won... last week, and Poly's boys and girls team won the city championship. Let's give them a round of applause. And we also are in the midst of the state playoffs, so we should be thinking about our teams that are competing in the next few days for the state championship. In particular, Poly's boys team are in the semifinals of the three A tournament. And in the one A tournament, both Lake Clifton and Edmanson are in the tournament. So we're hopeful that they'll win on the boys' side. And on the girls' side, I think we should just go for a sweep, right? Because in four A, Western is in the semifinals. In three A, Poly is in the semifinals. In two A, Forest Park is in the semifinals. And in one A, Coppin Academy is in the semifinals. So I think we should be as greedy as humanly possible and take home as many trophies as we possibly can. Let's talk for a minute about our equity policy, as it's no exaggeration to say that equity is the driving civil rights issue of the 21st century. The goal of equity is to change outcomes for people of color so that race is no longer a predictor of success in education, in work, in family life, and in every aspect of life. On June 11th, 2019, the board approved city schools' racial equity policy. And in doing so, Baltimore City became the first school district in Maryland with such a policy. The overarching goal of city schools' equity work is to change outcomes for young people so that race is no longer a predictor of academic success. So we're very pleased to announce that the equity policy, Board Policy ADA, is now posted and live on board docs for anyone to see. This is an incredibly important issue for our staff, our students, and our families. I encourage everyone to familiarize themselves with our equity policy and incorporate its principles in every aspect of our work. Dr. Durant is there in the back shaking her head and nodding up and down. And I want to say, as someone who went through Dr. Durant's training about a month ago, it is something that I think we all need to go through. She had, I know, I feel like there were 80 or 90 people in that room, and for two days, we went through a lot of issues of race, a lot of issues of equity. And I think it's going to spread really, really positively and make us think differently about our work. So I want to thank Dr. Durant, and we should give it all a round of applause because we are leading the way. And we also have to talk about some COVID-19 updates. We're all aware of the coronavirus or COVID-19. We will regularly provide, or I'm going to provide the most recent updates, but I want to encourage everyone to check the health update section on the front page of the city schools' website for the latest information about the virus in the city schools. Our communications team has done a great job of getting that up and running, and it is the first place that families should go. The district is committed to ensuring the health and well-being of our students, staff, and families. While we are grateful that no confirmed cases of COVID-19 have been identified in Baltimore City to date, last Friday, we proactively canceled all school and district-sponsored out-of-state and international travel for staff and students from now until June 15th. Yesterday, Governor Hogan curtailed all out-of-state travel by state employees, and now most LEAs are following suit. We issued instructions to school leaders and custodian supervisors for increased school cleaning and disinfecting, and we have also ordered significant quantities of disinfectant, soap, hand sanitizer, paper towels, and gloves while establishing a clear path for schools to reorder supplies before they run out. The district is working closely with our partners at the Baltimore City Health Department. They have been great partners. Let me just say that so everyone is aware. If the virus spreads to a school, the decision to close individual schools or all schools system-wide will be made on a case-by-case basis in close consultation with the Health Department. In the event of school closures, city schools will provide instructional activities for all students, and we're working with Baltimore City's Emergency Food Working Group to identify the safest options for food access and distribution. Most importantly, this is always the case, but it's really the case now, if your child is sick, keep him or her at home. I know that's hard for working families, and that's the majority of our families, but honestly, especially at this time, if your child is sick, have them stay at home. Also, protect yourself, your family, and your coworkers by washing your hands frequently and thoroughly, and follow the other preventative measures described in the health update section of the website. Last, don't listen to rumors. As someone who has had to hear a gazillion rumors that come through a lot of different places, there's a lot out there. Go to our health update section and get the facts. One more thing in closing, and while we can always talk about the virus and while we can always talk about academics that are near and dear to my heart, we also know that our young people face an even more serious threat every single day, which is the threat of gun violence on our streets. Last Saturday night, one of our students from Vanguard Collegiate Middle School was shot to death, just five days after his 13th birthday. He was the 12th city school student to die from gun violence since June. Five other people ranging in ages from 12 to 19 years old were wounded in the same incident. Four of those young people were also city schools' students. Our hearts go to the, goes out to the families and friends of all these victims, and we cannot help but feel anger and sorrow for the young lives lost in this real epidemic of senseless street violence. So yes, by all means, we should do everything we can to protect our families, but we must also take action to protect them from the other epidemic that is destroying lives every day. I'm sure next week, though, that name of that person will be probably someone that we give a moment of silence to, but I'd like for us to give a moment of silence to them right now as well. Thank you, and that concludes the remarks for the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And thank you especially for that, those final words. I think as, as we think about just, you know, the coronavirus, we do, especially in Baltimore with our young people, need to consider the entire environment and what it's doing and how it's impacting our families, especially our children. Going to make one slight change this evening because I have been informed that we don't have, other than one of the special groups, we have no one else signed up for public comment. So I'm going to move the, the one information item and do the consent agenda, and then we will have our special recognized group, and then we'll go back and do that information item. So this time, I'm just going to read the, the items for the consent agenda. This is not a time where we will be voting. If you want an item pulled, then we, we, well, actually, yes, because we do have, I'm sorry, we have some procurement in there. Okay. So the first item is, I need to pull the two waiver items, correct? Okay. So 8.01, a waiver request for Hampstead Hill, we need to pull for a vote. 8.02, a waiver request for the Mount Washington School, we need to pull for a vote. Then we have 8.03, supplemental appropriation air conditioning projects. 8.04, supplemental appropriation piping insulation projects. 8.05, supplemental appropriation elevator projects. 8.06, supplemental appropriation Holliburton and Graceland. In procurements, we have 12.01, New Vision's Youth Services Incorporated pulled. Okay. Is there a reason for this? Any particular item you'd like to have clarified?
Yeah, I have general questions about the support services that are being delivered.
Okay. Questions about the support services being delivered? Okay. 12.02, promotional items?
I'd like to unfold. I'd like to pull for general discussion and questions.
Okay.
Can we read anything else?
Okay. For general discussion and just questions. 12.03, math and literacy intervention programs?
Pull for a vote, please.
Pulled for a vote. 16.01, the new teacher project? I believe I've gotten, that's it, correct? So the items that have been pulled are 8.01, 8.02, 12.01, 12.02, 12.03. Okay. Okay. So at this time, we have one of our specially recognized groups. We have the Baltimore Teachers Union, and Mr. Zach Taylor is representing B T U tonight.
Good evening. And we'd also like to just echo the remarks regarding the Vanguard middle, middle school student, and really appreciate and acknowledge the work of the crisis response team or the crisis team. They do really important and difficult work. And it's, we, we hear from teachers every time these incidents happen, and we know that that team is really important. We'd also like to acknowledge the response we received from the district with regard to our systems preparation for a potential coronavirus issue. Over the last few weeks, we've sent many questions and had several conversations with district administrators, and today and last night, we've received many answers, and it's been helpful with informing our members and keeping them up to date. And we receive, honestly, even in the one hour I've been here, I've received about seven more messages just personally, let alone everybody else at the union. So I'm sure these conversations will be ongoing, and, you know, we really look to work to partner on these issues. Of course, the B T U's priority is to ensure the safety and well-being of all students and staff and their families, and we will continue communication to help develop a robust set of contingency plans in the case that they are needed. We'd also like to underscore the commitment city schools made to us with regard to being flexible in its attendance policy for staff during this time. As many of the current or former educators on the board know, teachers regularly work when they're not feeling their best, and this is especially true for our schools that struggle to get substitute teachers on a regular basis. And based off of what we've seen in other districts, that need will likely increase in coming weeks. We know that Seattle's public schools has seen a doubling of their number of teachers who are absent for either personal reasons regarding to their own health or taking care of a family member. We know that it is especially prudent for educators who are unwilling to stay home during this time, and we're getting questions about it every day. We also note that the CDC has recently issued guidance regarding at-risk populations, which includes all older adults and people with heart disease, diabetes, or lung disease. We have seen employees who are at higher risk of contracting COVID-19, including pregnant educators, be provided guidance on taking leave in school systems on the West Coast. And we look forward to working with the district to provide similar guidance to our at-risk populations as soon as possible. Virtually every educator we've talked to has made their own purchases to help keep their classrooms clean, and we are glad the district has prioritized purchasing cleaning supplies from the EPA-approved list. We would like to see these disinfectant sprays and other supplies be made available to all classrooms. We know that this is a school-by-school issue, and we'll be in touch with specifics as they're brought to us. And we appreciate that we've received personal emails from Chief Davis, and we've received a number of other people we can contact on these things, and we appreciate that it's not just kind of a blanket email sent to this. We don't know who it is. So I know that we have a lot of teachers who will be either going through the union or just responding directly. And lastly, we recognize that these are extremely unusual circumstances, and new information presents itself daily. We certainly don't want to contribute to any sense of panic, while at the same time, we understand the gravity of the situation and just how fast it could develop. As we represent 7,000 city schools' employees who all have very different circumstances, school by school, even classroom by classroom, floor by floor, things can be different bathroom by bathroom, we continue to ask to not just be updated on a plan, but to be a partner in the development of all of these plans as this event and situation unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I know, I'm, I'm sure you probably said it, Chief Davis, but all, but to everyone, please know that our website has generally the latest information, and for all of us, please use that as a initial source of looking for some of that information, but that is updated.
Yeah. And we send that out and all other communication to all our members directly because we know people get 1,000 emails. Hopefully, they'll look at one of them that comes from one of us.
All right. Now, I don't, none of the other recognized groups has signed up, and I don't believe that I see representatives from them. So we will now move to the information item, which is the Summer 2020 Plan.
Hi. I am Laura Hanyan, Director of Differentiated Learning.
Rhonda Welsh, Coordinator of Extended Learning.
And we're here to discuss the Summer 2020 Plan, sorry, Summer 2020 Plan. And if I cough, know that I have a sinus infection, and I've been checked by the doctor. I just don't want to worry anybody. And I'm on antibiotics, so. So each summer, we have really thought about the components of the blueprint and how we provide opportunities for our students and our employees that align to those components. I think for me, one of the best opportunities is the leadership opportunities students have, I mean, students and actually educators have in the program. So educators who might be a teacher during the school year can be administrators in our summer programs and really experience leadership opportunities they may not have had opportunities during the school year to do. And our students have opportunities to engage in activities that they might not have traditionally been engaged in, and we'll talk a lot about that today. We have four major goals with our summer programs, really focused on limiting summer learning loss in the areas of reading and math, and increasing promotion and graduation rates, but really also providing these engaging and enriching opportunities for students. And we really try to be very thoughtful about how we approach the work and evaluate it every year and make adjustments. And I'll talk a lot about that as we talk about the summer plan. Each summer, we take what I would call a mixed methods approach, so we look at both qualitative and quantitative data. The O A A's team does, conducts a site visit using guidance from the S C R team. And this year, there were seven and, seven student and teacher focus groups. I would note that one of the questions that might come up is, why wasn't every program, why wasn't there a focus group for every program? We have previous presentations, and we've done evaluations of some of the different programs. We just don't do every one every year because these are time-consuming visits. So there, we're almost on a little bit of a cycle around them. But these programs that we evaluated this year hadn't been evaluated previously through this qualitative observation. We also, of course, do quantitative analysis. We look at some non-academic factors like attendance, but we also look at end-of-year and beginning-of-the-year comparisons. We look at promotion rates and credits recovered. All of this can be found in the appendix and on, and it was scheduled to be presented to Teaching and Learning. We actually ended up being canceled that particular day, but the full evaluation is available online, and I have a link to it in the appendix in this presentation so you can get details. What I will do, because it wasn't presented publicly, is as we get to each grade band, I'll try to talk a little bit about what lessons we learned from the evaluation and how it informed that year. So I'm going to talk a little bit about an overview of the findings. So the Summer Arts and Learning Academy, which I'll refer to as Sala, just because that's what we refer to it as, showed significant improvement in I R E D math scores. We We did not see any change in I-ready ELA or DIBELS and attendance remained similar, but is considered quite high for a summer program. Spring Board Summer Program saw significant improvements in K-1 DIBELS performance, but no detected improvements in I-ready ELA. You'll notice we have no discussion of math there because it's a literacy-focused intervention and attendance rates improved slightly from the past years. So in a summary of some of the qualitative findings, this was our first year partnering with Ailey Dance Camp. Every student was a Baltimore City student and if you haven't had an opportunity to visit this particular program, you really should. It's pretty amazing. The teachers, with the qualitative findings, the teachers had really high expectations of the students and students felt free to express themselves and felt the teachers were really pushing them to believe in themselves. The Bootle, what was interesting about this particular focus group was the way the evaluators described it to me was that the students were so well-trained in this debate and dialogue that they basically took over the focus group and ran it and pushed each other in a way that they didn't even have to get involved. So I thought that was pretty, it's not in the findings, but I thought that was pretty cool. So, but the teachers had really high expectations of the students and they felt it was very engaging. We, the Middle School English Learner Program, and I want to note, these are all new programs that we ran last summer for the first time. The teachers felt really good about supporting the students with their home language and developing relationships with them and the students felt they were prepared for next year, but didn't always feel safe on the school grounds. In the Spring Board Summer Program, that, some of the teachers felt like had to leave because of under-enrollment, they reported, and would like more training and better planning around some of the components of it. The students shared mixed feedback about the learning and the, and lack of after-school activities. Middle grades promotion, teachers would have liked more training on how to support ELs and students in special education and they, the students wanted more hands-on activities in recess, but we really have to talk about them because they're, they really need to be there for academics, so we'll have to figure out how to support them. So I, I'm going to really clarify here that this is our proposed 2020 Summer Plan and that anything up to date will be on the district website. I, I always preface it every year, it doesn't matter when we're presenting it, you know, sometimes we end up with more offerings, sometimes we end up with adjusting offerings and we even have some updates as we talk that we got from last week, so it's a, it's, this is most likely what it's going to look like, but I just want to make clear it's proposed. So first thing I want to talk about is the elementary program. So I think the big takeaways and things we were trying to address, what isn't clear in the data, but if you look at the waitlists, our Sala, our Summer Arts and Learning Academy had over a thousand kids on a waitlist. So one of the things we're doing, one of the things to respond to that is expanding the programming, adding another site. And really looking at this pre-K2 in this program literacy focus and they're hiring coaches and really drilling in on this pre-K2 literacy supports. So that's a, other things that you're going to see, some of this is data-driven, some of not, our emerging scholar programs is going to be expanding and adding a fourth grade. This is, was expected growth, but we're pretty excited about it. And as of right now, it's looking like almost 75% of the students who attended last year, our emerging scholars have already enrolled to attend for this year, which is pretty exciting. It's pretty early on, too. And the final thing is Spring Board is really going to be a school-based decision. It's a school-based program, so as you look at this, you're not going to see it highlighted as a systemic because what you're going to see in these slides is really district-wide programs that are open to all students at that site. And they're not school, necessarily school-based programs. Schools will run a lot of different programs that we won't be talking about today.
So we're going to talk about three, we're going to talk about three elementary programs that we have for this coming summer. The first program we're going to talk about is the CTY Emerging Scholars Program. That program is a partnership with Johns Hopkins University. It's focused on students who are K-3, rising K-3, talent development, learning opportunities for cognitively advanced elementary students using STEM curriculum, gifted STEM curricula. It's a six-week program and we're going to be at two sites this summer and we've expanded the number of students from last year. The next program is the Summer Arts and Learning Academy. As Laura stated previously, this is a partner with young audiences. It's an arts integration program and based on the waitlisted students that we had last summer, we've expanded to a ninth site. So last year, we had eight sites, this year we have nine sites. One of those sites is LEAP grant-funded, so it is a six-week program site and the other eight sites will be five weeks. This program will serve approximately 2,600 students in the district. Whoops, sorry. My apologies, went a little too far here. Went way too far. We did partner with Summer Reads this, for this summer. The Summer Reads Program is a drop-in program and it will be at 10 of the Weinberg Library Sites throughout the city. Students can register online and then they can drop in for a week or they can drop in for five weeks of the program.
Before Rhonda goes into describing each of the middle school programs, I just want to talk a little bit about our learning. Last year, we did a pretty big expansion to our middle grades programming, really trying to help students in the middle grades explore different sort of opportunities to be able to learn more about themselves, learn more about, for example, the arts or debate. And so we expanded and we had a number of different offerings based on the evaluation data. We, these are the particular offerings we're going to continue with, so I'll talk a little bit about that. Some of the shifts we're doing based on the feedback, the middle school promotion program will actually be running as a district instead of partnering with a particular vendor. We've actually partnered with more than one vendor in past years and we felt really strongly that at this point, we would like to run it ourselves to address some of that qualitative feedback you heard around English learners and special education. We'll be adjusting some of the PD and we'll also have an ESL teacher and a special educator on-site in the program. Due to like space availability and really the school year programming, Bootle is a three through eight program and so we're going to expand that summer program to include students grades three through eight, to align to the after-school program that's during the school year. Play on Purpose or POP, which is a Freedom Schools, uses a Freedom Schools social justice curriculum, I don't know if you guys are aware of that. The Children's Defense Fund releases it and they were, we were able to partner with them based on a donation last year and we're hoping to partner with them with district funding this year, or based on some procurement that has to happen around it. And then based on the qualitative evaluations of the middle school EL, the Ailey Dance Camp, and Engineers of the Future, and Bootle will be continuing with all of those programs.
Okay, so as Laura stated, we have six middle school program offerings for the summer. The first program that we're going to continue to fund and work with is the Alvin Ailey Dance Camp. That's a partnership with Towson University. The students actually attend at Towson University in the Fine Arts Building. They work with trained dancers from the university and, and folks who are associated with the traveling Alvin Ailey Company in some instances and they're able to see those folks perform and have a real interaction with both the folks at the college and with the dance company itself. Seventy-two students participate in this program. They're expanding it for 100 students. The rest of the students would be filled by any others, but they got some grant funds to, to fill 100 seats, 72 of which have to be Baltimore City kids. Okay, the second program is the Baltimore Urban Debate League Camp. Again, we're going to partner with, with Bootle. They're going to be at two of our sites this summer, sites that we typically can't or, or are underserved. We find it challenging to have like a Sala site in Cherry Hill or something, but we wanted to try to put some other programs in some of our underserved communities and so we're partnering with Cherry Hill and John Rura for this program. The Engineers of the Future Program, we're going to continue with that program this summer. What I do want to note here is that we just recently found out that the grant that we had applied for, we did not get. We were looking to expand it to two sites and serve 700 students this summer. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that, but we are planning on continuing the program at a scaled-down program where it would serve eighth graders at two sites. Those eighth graders would then during the school year be enrolled in the virtual Algebra I course. The next program is the Middle School English Learners Program. This program, we started it last year as sort of a pilot and we found it extremely successful and helpful for our middle school EL population. The purpose of the program is to sort of support middle schoolers with language acquisition, literature, and provide cultural opportunities for them. It's a five-week program and it's going to be held at Digital Harbor. And then we get to the next program that we're going to operate and as Laura said, it's our middle school promotion program. We have been closely looking at data over the past several years and we've partnered with various partners over the years who have operated this for us. We've decided that they can't provide us with some of the quality rigor that we're hoping for to make it a true intervention. So the goal is to provide 300 retained sixth to eighth grade students, an intervention using both Lexia and Imagine Math as part of that curriculum piece. We're going to have parent educators that support in each classroom, the special educators and EL teachers to help support with that program. And so we're super excited to see the outcomes of this program. And then the last middle school program, again, is at partnership with POP, Play on Purpose. They use the CDF Freedom School model. It's, uh, the, the kids absolutely love it because part of the program is sports, a connection with sports, so they get them there, focus on literacy, and then they also get to be involved in, in some sports. And this is going to take place at Leith Walk Elementary Middle School.
All right, so I'll talk a little bit about the high school programming. Our high school English learner program was, our high school English learner program has actually grown significantly over the past four years, along with our population of English learners. And as a result, we're going to relocate it to digital with the middle school program, almost like a 612 option for our English learners. We are also going to try to increase some of those course options they have there. We're focused on students with interrupted schooling, so students with gaps in their instruction and provide original credit. And so based on the feedback, we wanted to make sure that the students felt safe where the school was. They had some concerns it was previously, where it was previously. And we also wanted to make sure that we had enough space to expand. We also have moved our, at our secondary site, based on feedback from students and who were participating in Youth Works, we've moved our late summer site. So as some of you might know, we have a late summer site for our students who might want to take, might not want to start first thing in the morning, so we start later in the day. We start around 11:30. But for the, we used to have a second session that was 2:30 to 5:00, it's now 3:00 to 6:00. So hopefully, if a student wants to participate in Youth Works, they have about half an hour or so to get over and participate and take a class.
Okay, so as Laura said, we have three high school programs. The first is our AP Summer Academy. We're expanding that program to 200 students. We're offering a variety of AP courses that are, well, I'll say, preparing students to take those courses during the regular school years. These students who participate are enrolled in these courses in the coming school year. And then we've added seminar and research as part of the options for that summer program.
Can I just, I think it's important to note here, this is aligned to a district initiative around expanding AP opportunities for all students. And so we've had this program for a number of years, but we're expanding the seats and we're expanding the offerings to align to our larger district strategic plan and goal around expanding AP offerings and having APs at every high school.
The next is the High School Credit Recovery Program. Again, this program is open to all high school students for both credit recovery and original credit. We offer every course in the summer that a student would need to graduate. This program, we have about 2,000 students in the summer, participate in this program, is spread across three sites. This year, we're going to be at Dunbar, Forest Park, and Murvo. And then the last program is the High School English Learner Program. As Laura stated, we're trying to be more strategic about pairing both the middle school and high school EL programs at a single site and we're going to have it at Digital Harbor, which is a, a large EL school during the school year and we feel like students will feel more at home, safe in this location. The next two slides are basically just a overview of every program, number of students, kind of a breakdown and a breakdown budget, where, where the funds are coming from. And I'll let you look at that on your own. Any questions or comments?
Commissioner Montembeau?
Thank you, very interesting. You, you're running many programs and when I look at the funding, the agencies, I mean, the, where the money's coming from, I do see Title I and, and I saw one from NSF, but there are a whole lot of agencies that give summer funding. And you, and I really, and I, I would like to know the agencies that you have applied to and for whatever reason was rejected. I really would like to know the reason why, because our population should be able to get all the funding. So, and I really, really would like for you to submit it to us, you know, I see you have some of it, but I don't think you list all of the agencies and the, I don't know if you applied to, to Department of Education, all those other agencies, federal agencies, you had, you have applied to those agencies and I see you had applied to NSF. NIH give out grants for the summer and do, you know, and for K, not for K through, mostly for high school, middle school. I really would like to see all the agencies that you apply and the reason why they rejected it.
So we actually don't do as many applications ourselves. A lot of the funding that comes in is through the Funding Collaborative, which the city has, and the partners we work with apply for a lot of those grants. So what you see here is often our portion of what we're providing. The particular grant we were talking about was the National Science Foundation Grant and I don't, I, I don't have the reason here why it was turned down. If we have it, I will happily for a follow-up and provide it.
I have, I need a follow-up because
Yeah, absolutely.
It is really important because we have the community, the population to be getting some of those grants. And when I go through all the grants for the feds and the local and, for example, like Annie E. Casey, do you get grants from Annie E. Casey?
So Casey is one of the partners that's part of the So Casey is one of the partners that's part of the Funding Collaborative, and a lot of the organizations we work with do have grants through these different organizations.
So we don't write our own grants?
They tend to provide, a lot of the summer programming happens through partners, and those partners provide the grants, and then we pay for our portion of...
You partner with them?
Yeah, we partner with them. I will say that the LEAP grant, for example, that was one we applied for, and we've expanded that quite significantly. We applied through MSD for it. So I'm happy to talk about that. Some of our, that's how we were able to fund the Emerging Scholars Program, for example. But we were actually turned down for some of our LEAP grants too, some of them we approved, some of them we weren't. So as Rhonda had mentioned, we had our six-week program at one point. So I'm happy to go back and see which ones we particularly applied for, for summer programming. And a lot of times, schools will do this, but we don't monitor all the school-based programs. A lot of schools will have their own programs just for their school community. The only things we're focused on here is the district-wide programs that we're running, which are by far the largest.
Okay, I really would like to see some of the grants. A list of the grants, the funding agencies that you receive your funds from, and also it's critical to know why they rejected us.
Sure.
I mean, what was the reason? So we won't make that mistake again, and/or we can, maybe we're not partnering with the correct agency, maybe we need to do something else. And you, maybe you're doing all the right things, it's just that it's so many agencies and districts that, who are applying for the same, it's so competitive, it could be that.
Oh, yeah, okay. No, I'm happy, we're happy to do that.
You're asking this for the, for the summer programming, correct?
Some of this is year-round program.
Well, that's why, that's why I want...
That's why I want to be certain, because it may be a different set of folks that would get some of that information. Are you asking for the grants for the summer programming at this point?
The summer program.
Okay.
But what I'm noticing is that I think you have some programs, you have weekend programs, don't you? You don't have any weekend programs?
Not that our district funded or operated.
Okay, but the summer programs are really important.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And you'll send a copy of information to the office.
Yep, sure.
Okay, thank you very much.
As long as we have the reason, I'll provide it.
Okay.
Excuse me?
As long as we have the reason, we don't always get the, a full understanding of the reason, but if we have it, we'll provide it.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson?
I just want to be clear, when you say this is for our district students, this is just for students who attend traditional schools, correct? These are not for students who attend charter schools?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, because I was told that last year when I wanted my daughter to attend one of the programs
Okay.
And was told that she could not because she was going to a charter school.
Was it a charter school that was title, was it Title I eligible?
Yes, I'm sure it was.
Okay. So if they're Title I eligible, they can attend if they're at a Title I eligible school. That's, it all depends on the grant. So Title IV doesn't have the same requirements, for example, as a Title I grant, and it all depends on the funding sources. But we do not for the title, for the elementary programs and the middle school programs that are title-funded, if you're a Title I eligible student, you can attend.
Okay, I want to clarify, I'm not sure that her school is Title I or not, but I will say this. I suggested this, I'll suggest it on the record this time
Sure.
That perhaps there are other payment options. So if you have programs where certain students are excluded because of the type of school that they go to, if a parent is willing, because we're paying for summer school anyway. So if a parent is willing to pay out of pocket, perhaps that could be an additional way that you can open up the number of seats that additional students can attend. So that will be a suggestion that I'm giving on the record, and hopefully you guys can work with that.
Well, I know, like, I mean, we have all programs, like for the middle and high school, is open to charter schools and for the high school, private schools as well. The difference is that, again, like you stated, there is a fee for that. Like the middle school program this year, we've done away with fees for traditional school students. There is no fee. It used to be $25. Now there is no fee. We wanted to get rid of that this year. But there still is a fee for charter schools for the middle school program. And there is a fee for charter schools for the high school, and it's even higher for private school students to attend. We allow them to attend, but it does cost more. And again, we can have that conversation with, say, Kim Hoffman about the Title I, whether we're allowed, because it gets really iffy sometimes with, because of the funding source, whether we're allowed, like if, you know, this student doesn't attend and they're taking, because we only have so many seats, are they taking us even if they pay for it? So it's very sort of touchy, but we can have that conversation with Kim and ask her folk.
That would be great. I was, I was in particular interested in the engineering program, and so was told that she wouldn't be able to do that.
And I think the engineering program, that I'm not certain of, but I know there's criteria for certain programs as well that may not have anything to do with funding, but may have something to do with, say, test scores in math or something.
That wouldn't have been our issue.
Or if they attend a school where the student can't have access to Algebra One in eighth grade, which is part of the criteria for that program.
Okay, it's just a suggestion.
No, no, it's great. No, we just wanted to explain, so, because we've explored it before, but I, so I wanted Rhonda to explain the areas that we've already been able to accomplish it and in the areas that we have to continue to exploit.
Thank you.
Okay. Of course. Commissioner Brookes and Commissioner Reed.
Just two quick questions. One, is there a, what's the mechanism for the distribution of the information around particular programs for the summer offerings that go out to parents? And also, do they include things like what Commissioner Richardson talked about in terms of the eligibility criteria? And then two, specifically for the Ellen Avery dancers, so I, sort of, you read the first part of the quote, but the last part was that they felt, some of the young women felt, or the young people felt, that they were being, it was hard on them, that they were, and so interested in figuring out if that's hard in terms of rigor, but is there also, did anyone go out and follow up to figure out, were there other things that are going on in that space that would have suggested that that might have not been the best or most useful way to support those students at that time?
So I will note, we were out at ALI because it was their first year a number of times. And I was actually there for some of that focus group, and I think when they said it was hard, they were referring to, it is physically demanding, that program. It really is. I mean, it is, and they do not have to have any dance experience to do it, but when they walk in that door, they treat them like dancers. And they have them dancing most of the day, right? And so I think that was, and they, I mean, they're tough. Those dance instructors are a lot tougher than I, I didn't realize how tough they are, right? The students really love it, but it is, it's a rigorous experience for them. So I think that's what they meant by tough, because we asked about it a little bit, but we can go back and ask more. I would also, I'm sorry, can you repeat your first question, because I answered you?
The vehicle, like, how are parents now finding, being notified, community members of those offerings and the criteria and everything else, so they can select those schools?
I apologize, Commissioner Brooks, I was answering your second one and I lost the first one as I was doing it. So we share it on the website, like I mentioned. A lot of the partners have their own outreach. What we find, or are finding in a lot of our programs is because we are sticking with the ones that are the most engaging, we're finding repeat families. So families who were there the past year want to re-enroll. So we, they often contact those families first to let them know. For the program that was mentioned, for example, the Engineers of the Future, the students that qualify actually get a letter directly notifying them that you qualify and you can enroll in the program. So depending on the program, that the outreach happens in different ways, depending on the needs and the programs. But it's always public on the website. In past years, we've worked with the city to really share it out on their website as well. They had a summer website. And we also work with the partners that are running the programs. For example, with the high school, all the guidance counselors are aware of the high school program. We tend to not have any problems filling that program out, but our high school credit recovery, the guidance counselors and school-based staff are informed. So a lot of the students are coming in with all the paperwork from their guidance counselor, for example. So it depends on the program. We have different avenues for sharing the information, if that makes sense.
And then, and also to add to that, if we find that at a site where we are having difficulties, like filling seats, like we have seats still available, we've done robo-calls to families. Like if we have seats for first graders, we'll send robo-calls out to first-grade families at, like, in the surrounding communities that would be able to go, you know, within walking distance of the school. And then I know, like, young audiences and others, they're doing flyers. Like if they have a program at that school, they're going to parent nights and they're going to, you know, they're backpacking flyers and things out to families. So they're, like Laura said, there's a lot of ways that we're trying to reach out and get families to engage in our programs for the summer.
Yeah, and I guess with that information, which is helpful, just maybe one strategy is trying to have something systematized, and so especially if folks are going back to the same families that were participating before, that means that other families won't have an opportunity to do that. And so I just want to kind of put, flag that, but then also to just, I know there are programs for my nephew, my sister, she's just not aware of them, and I think if there were ways in which information could get to families and community folks in a much more systematic way, so that it doesn't seem like only certain pockets of students get access versus others, that might be helpful to, for families.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
I guess the kids said that they want more afternoon programs, more outdoor programs.
So the afternoon came from Spring Board. Spring Board is a half-day program.
Okay.
All our other programs are full day.
Okay.
And actually, young audiences, about three years ago, started aftercare, or four years ago, I can't even remember at this point.
Okay, and Leith Walk has sports. Is there some mechanism where you can, I don't know if it's cost prohibitive or not, where you can engage in more outdoor and more sports activity for the kids?
Actually, that's part of, I should let you talk about it for the middle school promotion.
For our middle school promotion program, again, I feel like it's my child this year. I've added a basketball camp component to the program, so that at the end of the academic day, we're hiring district coaches and PE health teachers to support a basketball camp that'll be open to like 50 students, and it's only from those who attend that middle school program. So it's at least something, hopefully to get maybe some of those kids who have a challenge coming to the program for the promotion piece, hopefully that will be the shtick to get them in the door and keep them coming back every day, that basketball camp. And then, and then the thing with Pop, that is a way of, you know, engaging students in both literacy as well as the athletics piece. But again, when you're looking for programs and funding and all of those things, I mean, we can only do so much, which is unfortunate. And I think a lot of the folks in the funding community, when you look at the Funding Collaborative or others in the funding community, they're funding those types of programs as well.
And I would note that there is a lot of programs, like the Parks and Rec offer. We have really tried to hone in on ones that support the whole child, but are, have an academic or a social-emotional base, right? It just, because of the funding sources that we're utilizing.
The reason I say that is because, I mean, academic-emotional is important.
Oh, yeah.
But most guys I know go to school because they can play.
Yeah.
And if you make out a component, you'll get more engagement.
Yeah, yeah, and that's also why we, for example, have an arts-integrated summer program, right? Because we want things to be a little different also from what they experience in the school year, so in the elementary school. So I, we agree, that's why we were doing it for the promotion, middle school promotion. That's, that right there is one of the reasons, is because we want to get more kids in the middle school promotion program and engaged in it, and so that was the exact reason we were thinking. With the high school program, we don't do that. Most of the kids start their, will have some, some are, you know, they have some of their own summer stuff they have going on. They really come in for the high school program, take their courses and sort of leave. It's really, it's about the courses in the summer for the high school. So we have never done that, we can explore it, but I, I don't know if the high school students, they tend to come and want to take their course. Some of them only take one course, if they need two, they take two, and then they sort of do their own thing, because they have jobs and other stuff going on. Does that make sense? And those, we have no problems filling, we get the kids.
Commissioner James?
No? Okay. Is that, all right. Thank you. One thing I would just focus in on what Commissioner Brooks did say, because in addition to what you've presented, as you've said, individual schools also are doing offerings. And so if there was a way, which I know is, it's a lot, but if there was a way to capture everything that's available, you know, for summer easily, that would probably be very helpful for parents and families.
So we've actually explored that, if this is helpful, and we'll provide what we can. We won't have it anytime soon, because schools tend to make those decisions a little closer to summer. But the best way we've found to capture is through food and nutrition, because if they've got kids in the building, they're going to end up wanting to feed them. And so we do have a district-wide survey, and we've worked with, we're partnering with the managers in implementing and expanding it to try to capture it. It's kind of a moving target. It's also a little complicated, because you think, summer program, and then you realize there's like one-week programs that are, right? There's just a lot of different definitions of what a program is. You might be just coming in for one week to do, you know, what they call like bridge program for the ninth, rising ninth graders, does that count as a summer program? If they have, like, if they're just coming in and working with a particular teacher just for a week. And so we're just trying to, trying to, it, it's, it's a little bit like herding cats, is what we've found, and trying to figure it out, but we will provide what we can. If you put it in there, we're happy to provide what we know.
Yeah, no, I agree, it may be difficult, but at some point, I think we do need to be able to say, these are all the things that we are, that are offered. Because there may be that one parent that, you know, that's looking for a one-week program, and there needs to be a place to call or a place to look to see if we provide it.
And the city has usually done that, for the entire city.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
All righty, so we're going now back to the consent agenda, folks. Was there anything that wasn't pulled? One. I only have one. I'm going, I'm looking back, I think there is only one item that was left that wasn't pulled. Am I correct?
No. 803 through 811.
Yes. Thank you. 803, 804, 805, 806, and 1601, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to see if there's a motion for that, to accept that, the consent agenda. Commissioner Brooks, your second. Commissioner Richardson, those in favor?
James, London.
Richardson.
Kenya.
Brooks.
Robert.
That's eight, one absent. Okay, now I'm backing up, looking at items. The two waiver requests, 8.01, 8.02, these are two items that our student commissioner is a part of the voting. Someone put those two together? Is there a motion?
Book.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner James, your second. Commissioner Brooks, all those in favor?
James, London.
He can.
He can. We'll start again. Go ahead, all those in favor?
James, London.
Kenya.
Brooks.
So we have nine, one absent. That's because I wrote it down. I'm learning. All righty, now I'm going to, we're looking at the procurement items that were pulled. And the first one is 12.01, which is New Vision Youth Services Incorporated. And thank Commissioner Brooks, had some questions on this one.
Yeah, so, hi. Quick question. So I read in the piece, because there was no data regarding sort of the effectiveness of this particular program, and was wondering if you could talk to me a little bit about what that is, especially since it looked like it said there was supposed to be some evaluation that happened two years ago, but it has not, and now we're offering additional funds for that?
Excellent question.
Now, can you hear me? All right. Excellent question. So the New Vision is committed to doing evaluation with an external partner, and they're currently in that process. Many of our schools have found this partner very valuable and have been able to speak to sort of the positivity that this organization has been able to bring in terms of helping to develop rapport with students. So principals have given a lot of feedback in terms of New Vision's being very significant to helping with ensuring that students... New Vision's being very significant to helping with ensuring that students have an adult that they can connect with in the school, ensuring that climate is a positive climate within the school. But as of right now, New Vision's in terms of its level of effectiveness did not submit its evaluation back in that 2017, submit that data then. And so they do not have that level of effectiveness for, as currently.
Was there a rationale why they didn't resubmit it?
Yes. So they will still work, the evaluator that was working with that organization at the time was not able to fulfill that contract at that time.
And so do we, so, do we have a guarantee that they're going to submit the next one?
Yes. They have, they are committed to working with an external partner. They have identified the external partner and will be providing us information in terms of their effectiveness to OAA.
Great. And then another question, particularly around the services that they provide, and it says they pull from local communities to do some of the work. Could you speak to sort of what that process looks like? And then how many folks are being hired locally to be those peer supports? That sort of thing?
Yes. I can't speak specifically to their employment process or their hiring process. But one of the things they really pride themselves on is being able to find individuals within the community who are working within those schools. And as you know, that helps when they are working in that same community to which the students are there. It helps to build that relationship and help being able to build that rapport. Part of it is making sure that they have individuals who understand the community, individuals who understand the students, individuals who are able to relate to the students and the families that they connect with well. So they really make sure that they have individuals who can do that when they come into the schools. I can't really speak to how many, because each school can decide on how many adults that they want to work within the school. So it really depends on what the school asks for, in terms of the mentors.
Great. And so that, that block fee, I think it was like almost, almost fifty thousand dollars. I think it was like forty-two. Is that for a singular person at any location? Or is that broken down to, you know, peer mentors or, you know, parts of their salary or?
So the, if I remember correctly, the salary per, the hourly rate is forty, thirty-nine? Yes. It's hourly rate for the services.
For one?
For one individual.
For one individual to be in that school at that time. Okay. And then I guess the last question I would have is, is it possible to get their, their hiring information as a part of the procurement the next time, to figure out, to see one, who they're hiring, wouldn't, particularly around a race equity background in terms of the breakdown of their staff included in the next procurement sort of portfolio?
Yes, absolutely. We can ask for that information.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to accept this procurement? Oh. Commissioner Brooks, there's a second. Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor?
James.
Richardson. Chinia.
Brooks.
That's eight and one absent. So this, our procurement is approved. Twelve point zero two promotional items. Did you pull this one? Oh. Commissioner Reed, was this the one you had some questions?
I mean, I know it's hard to quantify, but we have a lot of expenses, a lot of things we spend money on. So what's the return on investment for you guys increasing the budget for promotional items?
That's an interesting question. Hi, Casey Mingle, Special Assistant in the Chief Academic Office.
Yeah, I meant that. Return on investment.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's an interesting question because they're used for a variety of things, right? So this can be anything from trophies that you're awarding to students or certificates or things like that, all the way to like lanyards that may be awarded, you know, through PBIS or through some other incentive program. So the contract here in particular allows for schools to invest in those things. I would wonder if the return on investment question relates to the program through which they're leveraging these particular incentives, though, as opposed to the physical material itself.
You do it for a benefit.
Yes.
So what's the benefit for the promotions? Hopefully, it's economic, but what's the benefit?
I think that's a fantastic question. I'm, I really do. I'm not sure entirely that in, with regards to the way schools are purchasing these materials, I just wonder if that's something that we could quantify. You know, the return on investment of providing a trophy to a student who's been receiving, or who is getting an award, I think we would have to explore exactly what that would look like in terms of the return on that.
Let me throw a couple of things out here.
Chief Davis is going to try also.
I mean, I think it is very nuanced and very difficult. But I do think that, yes, sometimes around PBIS, right, if that is where some of the promotional items are happening, then that is something that we don't have hardcore data on, but we do have soft data with respect to many schools wanting to use a positive behavior intervention program, and PBIS is one. Now, that doesn't account for everything, but I would say other promotional items speak to culture and climate of a school, right? You do want to make sure that the students feel pride in their school, that the families feel pride in their school. And so I do think quantifying that is very difficult, but I do at least want that in your brain, that that is kind of where this is heading, is sometimes programmatic and sometimes just around the culture and climate of a school. And again, I understand the ROI question, and it's always a great question. The person who usually sits in this seat throws that question to me, I don't know, I feel like every five minutes. So I don't, you know, I completely appreciate that. I do want to say there's some complexity with promotional items that really get to culture and climate and get to specific programs.
No, because the reason I ask this is because with the money, with the change in the dollars, we can hire three principals. I mean, so that's, that's where my mind goes.
Sure.
And I know the benefit of three principals, but I don't know the benefit of promotional items. That's what's driving.
So, my questions around, around this topic were, and now with Chief Davis's input, because the only thing specified in here was the PBIS usage. And there was no information on past history or distribution. So knowing, those are two really big, different buckets. So using of, and I'm going to lead into my next comment about token economies, and the use of token economies, which research says doesn't change behaviors. We know intervention plans where there's an extrinsic reward, only work if they're closely monitored, and very, very, very periodic inputs, where we also know in PBIS, in practice, is very much, I caught you doing something good for the first time in two weeks, so I'm going to reward you, which, you know, does all sorts of things to climate and doesn't do anything to behavior. So I would love to see this teased out, because I do understand the importance of culture and school culture and, and parents feeling belonging. One of my challenges lately is I've been asking kids that I see on the street, you know, where do you go to school? And it astounds me the number of students who don't know the name of their school. So we do have some big work to do around that. But as far as, as the, you know, the buying, getting good behavior bucks and going to the store, that's not teaching emotional self-regulation, and that's not teaching the language around how to, you know, kids are walking around saying, I'm feeling some kind of way. Well, if you don't have the words to say how you're feeling, how in the world are you going to? And where are we teaching that in ways that I think we could use this money far more effectively for that? So is there a way to find out how much is for school swag promotion versus how much is, is really, you know, incentivizing children through suckers and stickers?
Yeah, that's also a great question. We spoke with the buyer who's listed on this particular procurement item to see if we could, based on our, like, costing strings, identify whether this was like instructional supply and material, and then like what the description is within that purchase versus something, we have another line item, I'm probably going to get it wrong, oh-three something or other, which-
Right, which?
Okay. Which is specific for promotional activities. So we did speak with her yesterday to ask if she could tease that out, because we have very much the same question. What's the quantity that's going to one versus the other? And in those procurements, which are all done at the school level, is it listed in there as specific to PBIS or to some other particular program? So we have asked for that information.
So is there any sense of urgency to this, or could we wait till we have that information divided out?
As of right now, we will not have any more money left in this particular contract to buy anything. So what would happen is we would just stop purchasing from these organizations.
Could we go two, three weeks without trophies?
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, that sounds kind of tongue-in-cheek, but it's-
No, I hadn't.
Awards, yeah.
I'm just going to have to jump in, I guess. I'm sorry, but from, just from my experience of being in a school, I know some of this is for end-of-year awards. So, I mean, people say trophies and certificates, it's a variety of things. So, yeah, I mean, we could hold it up, but that simply means folks are going to, you know, going to use a lot of other paper and materials to create what students are used to getting. And I, personally, I hear, I hear some of the argument around the incentives. However, there is, there are positive aspects to students receiving awards for doing a good job. And so I just, I don't want us to hold up everything that's happening in a time when we're saying, we're taking away some things that are incentives by way of curtailing trips. To take away this, to me, would just be adding at this time.
And I hear that, and I certainly wouldn't want to take away recognitions for accomplishments and achievements. There are ways to incentivize, though, with things like additional recess time you could earn, or healthy snacks through the fruit and vegetables grant, or times to be able to promote positive behaviors that don't, aren't, you know, a trinket.
Commissioner Lynn?
I don't understand, I'm trying to understand what's being argued here. And it, from my recollection, what I hear is that we're saying that, you know, giving students incentives are not good for them, and it's not helping them in an emotional standpoint, or it's not helping them at all. And I just simply disagree with that argument. And I see that these have, you know, so much more than just, oh, I'm giving you a certificate. This has more of, you know, I give you this, but you see that you're doing an amazing job in your school, and you're going to continue to strive to do good in your school, and you're going to continue to strive to do more in your classroom, and you're going to continue to go to school. So that's where I see it from my perspective. I do not see that it is just an scapegoat to just say, hey, here you are, and then we just expect the students to not follow through and continue to fight or continue to do what they're doing academically, or continue to do what they're doing in school at all. I just don't see how the connection of giving incentives does not help them. I just don't get that connection at all. I just don't.
And just for clarification, this is coming from the individual schools' budgets?
Yes, it can come from either individual schools or offices. But, yeah, individual, usually general dollars.
I think that this also gives us an opportunity for school leaders and schools to leverage partnerships, community partnerships, their, their relationships with stakeholders within the community to kind of supplement programming like that. And to Dr. James's point, I think that there are additional ways to teach restorative behavior. But I do think that schools also should be leveraging more of those community partnerships. So in the conversation, I just wanted to raise that, as we did in committee earlier last week.
Any other comments? Mr. Roberts?
On this procurement, there are four companies listed. Only one of them is an MBE, and there wasn't an MBE requirement for something like professional, promotional items. In your response back, Mr. Smith, you said that a waiver was issued for this. Could you explain to us why a waiver was issued for promotional items?
Good evening, Michael. My name is Michael Smith. Yes, this waiver was issued back in 2016 because with promotional items, there were, there was only one certified MBE at that time. Now, the options exist throughout, but it's, it's broken down into different schools, so it'd be hard to break it up into fifteen dollars here or thirty dollars here. So it'd be hard to break it up, individual contract. We talked about segmenting that is kind of difficult to do.
And you also added that with waivers, it's hard to, you said that as of last week, there was no way to collect data on when an MBE asked for a waiver for MBE participation? So how will you move forward with, because as I understand waivers, just because they ask for a waiver doesn't mean that they won't have any MBE participation, right?
Typically, what occurs, a waiver might come from the buyer here at BCPS and come to our office, will be approved. Often, we don't approve it. Sometimes, we do. When we approve it, then if it goes out, and a prime contractor might request a waiver.
But as it stays now, there won't be any way for us to collect the information on any MBE participation that they could offer, right?
As of this, now, no.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve this item? Commissioner Richardson, is there a second? Commissioner Brooks? Okay, all those in favor? Chinia.
McFadden.
Brooks. All those opposed?
James.
So that's five in favor, three opposed, one absent. So this is approved. Thank you. Item twelve point zero three was pulled just for the vote. Is that correct? Okay, alright. Were there any other, no other items? So is there a motion to approve this item, math and literacy intervention programs?
Move to approve.
Commissioner McFadden, a second. Commissioner Richardson, all those in favor? Von Dema, Richardson, Chinia, McFadden, Brooks.
Robert.
And Reed, opposed, recuse.
Mark, what am I, James?
Okay. So, seven in favor, one recusal, one absent. This is approved. We've done them all, correct?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Alrighty. There is, there are no other items, and so I will give you the, just a reminder that committee reports are available on board docs. And the upcoming committee meetings, Operations Committee will meet on Tuesday, March 17th, at 10:30 a.m. Policy Committee meets that same day, March 17th, at 3:30 p.m., both here in the boardroom, where you're green that day. Parent-teacher advisory board meets on Thursday, March 19th, at 6:30 here in the boardroom. Next, next public, executive session and public board meeting is Tuesday, March 24th. And the Teaching and Learning Committee will meet again on Tuesday, May 5th. That gap is because of the spring break-
Yes, ma'am.
-that everyone is waiting for. If there is no other business, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, Commissioner James already made the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Everyone has done a second. All in favor? Say good night. Good night, everyone. Thank you.